Well, good evening, everyone, and welcome to tonight's county council meeting. We will get started with our invocation followed by our pledge of allegiance with Council McClinghammer. To pray for us tonight, from the Truth Church in O'Fallon is Elder Edward Stewart. Mr. Stewart, if you come up and pray for us, if you please stand and remove your caps.
Praise the Lord and good evening. Lord God, we thank you, oh heavenly Father, for allowing us to be here tonight, dear Lord. Well, Lord, we ask that you bless this meeting, dear Lord, that it be fruitful, oh heavenly Father. We ask, oh Lord God, that you bless each and every council member here, dear Lord God. We ask, Lord God, that you lead, guide, and direct them, oh heavenly Father. Father God, we ask as well, dear Lord God, that you give them the right mindset, dear Lord God, to make decisions, oh heavenly Father, and the right choices, dear Lord God. We thank you, Lord God, for the men and women that serve this community, Lord. We thank you, dear Lord God, for those who have been given charge to protect and to serve, dear Lord, the policemen, the firemen, and the medical, dear Lord God. And Father God, we thank you for each and every family member that's represented here tonight, and we ask that you bless them, oh Lord God. And we thank you, Lord, for your blessings. We thank you, Lord, for your mercy. We thank you, Lord, for your grace, oh heavenly Father. And we thank you for your love. In Jesus' name we pray, amen and amen.
Amen.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You may be seated. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Joe Cronin.
Here.
Councilmember Joe Brazel.
Here.
Councilmember Dave Hammond.
Here.
Councilmember Mike Elam.
Here.
Councilmember Terry Hollander.
Here.
Councilmember Mike Klinghammer.
Here.
Councilmember John White.
Here.
We will start with a public hearing on the capital improvement plan from 2018 to 2022. Is there anyone who would like to speak on the capital improvement plan tonight? Mr. Deenoff.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, members of the county council. There are two items that I would like to address. The first one is concerning our county police department and the sheriff's department alike. The police vehicles, which we have on staff, I think we should use them to the lifetime expectancy. We have, we do the regular maintenance. We have an agreement with Firestone and other facilities throughout the county where we do routine maintenance on the transmission, on the oil, and general maintenance of the vehicles. These vehicles should be used and should last our department anywhere from three to five years. A lot of these vehicles, the command staff at the police department wants to go from the old brown vehicles to the all-black vehicles with white lettering. I'm opposed to let's just buy new vehicles and heck with our investment. Let's get the whole utility and the whole lifespan of these vehicles till their full lifespan. Let's replace them as needed. The next item that I'd like to address is our county parks. It seems like the county parks department is out of control spending. We have a lot of people on staff on the engineering department, and I'll talk about during my public comments, but we have construction project managers, engineering staff. We need to do a lot more in-house of the architectural and engineering services to save taxpayer money instead of bidding it out. So I appreciate you taking those into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak on the capital improvement plan? Seeing none, we will close the public hearing on that. We will move, I'm sorry, did I miss somebody?
No.
Oh, you caught me out of the corner of my eye. Shiny object, Dave, you can't do that to me. So we'll move on to public comments. For public comments, for those of you who don't know, normally we take three speakers on each side of an issue, three for, three against. We limit your comments to three minutes. At the end of three minutes, you'll hear the timer go off. I'll thank you for your time, ask you to be seated, and we'll bring up our next speaker. So our first speaker for tonight is?
Ernie Deenoff.
Mr. Deenoff, return appearance.
Thank you very much, members of the county council, Ernie Deenoff, public advocate and county resident. In August, many of you might not know, but our county's population has gone over 425 county citizens. Look at the building permits to achieve these facts. On Wednesday morning on KMOX 1120 AM radio, The Charlie Brennan Show, Steve Elman, the county executive, will be talking about the county's great growth and expansion, and I ask our county residents to tune in and if you have questions, to call in your questions to the station. I love our county as most of you do. I've asked the county executive, Mr. Elman, over and over and over to serve on some type of county task force, board, or commission. I have volunteered for many task forces and boards and commissions by writing me emails, and I always am ignored or told, "No, quote, we can handle it." I want to participate in our government, not sit on the sidelines and let things pass by. But do you have to pay to get an appointment to a county board or commission? Is that what I'm kind of sensing here? Mr. Elman, I will keep on, I will keep going and keep on asking to be appointed to a board or commission. On your consent agenda is Mattson Hill Park Phase Two Development, Engineering Design Services, one for a one-way loop road, a parking lot, restrooms, utilities, a trail, assessment of the barns. Backs Engineering is the recommendation from the Parks Department, the amount of $398,140. Where are the fees from Cochran Coal Engineering, Frontenac, Coolman, Oates, Tuvinow Wade? I like to see those figures to make sure that we're being cognizant of taxpayer dollars. And where are the hard numbers and facts here? Where is the in-house staff, the park personnel, the construction project managers on staff, and our county engineering staff to do this in-house work that I spoke about in the capital improvement projects? And concerning proposed ordinance 4508, I have a problem doing away with or reducing performance guarantees and performance bonds for subdivisions. It's a must to protect homeowners, protect subdivision trustees, and our 425 county residents. It gives us protection and guarantees. Who is running and amending this? Who is driving the ship? Developers, real estate attorneys, homeowners, I'm sorry, home builders. Look after their clients and making more profits while the taxpayers flip the bill for deficiencies and problems in roads and construction of underground utilities. The bottom line, we as citizens and subdivision homeowners need to be fully protected under the law. Look at the campaign contributions of Missouri Ethics Commission to you, the council, and the county executive. Citizens, follow the money. Do not reduce the performance bond. Leave it at 10%. Do not reduce the guarantee bonding.
Thank you, Mr. Deenoff. Time has expired.
Thank you.
Our next speaker tonight is?
Tony Gang.
Hello.
Hi, ma'am. This will be quick. I just, I'm a representative of Fairfield Place Subdivision at McClay and Thailey. We have a water retention pond going in. No one knew about it. We understand why it's being built. There's a sewer problem at subdivisions to our west, near Jokum and Ann Church. We're already getting some erosion from all of the soil that backs up to our subdivision. My house is one of them. I was, I've asked the St. Charles County Highway Department a couple of times, what will this look like? We didn't know this was happening. We just wanted to know what it would look like. I'm getting hardly anywhere. I'm getting, there's going to be grass. It'll be about 72 days. No fence, nothing to stop the erosion, basically, just grass, maybe some sod. And I'm just here to say, I know there's going to be another meeting. I've heard that Jokum and Ann is also concerned about, there's no fence around it. They're worried that children might fall into it. It's very deep. And I have ideas, but I'm sure that the St. Charles Highway Department should know that they should do something to support the soil that they took away, that our land was draining down into that area. It used to be part of the remaining field that was part of my house. You know, we had a farmhouse, or it used to be a farm, I guess, in that area. We've had no erosion problems, but it's starting already, and we haven't even had hardly any rain. I just want to see if something else can be done to the plans that will help us keep our, maintain our integrity of our backyards at Fairfield Place. And Mr. Barkley said that there was going to be another meeting, so I'm just trying to trigger a little bit of discussion for all of you to maybe consider what else can be done, because it's almost too late. They're about done. They've dug a deep hole, and three of our homes already have some soil eroding. So, that's it.
Okay. Thank you. Do the ladies have your address?
Yes.
Beautiful. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker?
That's it.
That's it. So with that, we'll close public comments or report from the county executive?
None this evening, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. We'll move on to the consent agenda. Do I have a motion on the consent agenda?
Motion.
Second.
Motion to be made to approve, a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those oppose? Consent agenda is approved. That moves us on to resolutions for tonight. We'll move on to Resolution 1709.
Resolution number 1709, sponsored by Joe Brazel, Dave Hammond, and Mike Klinghammer, a resolution extending the deadline of the St. Charles County Council, the county council ad hoc committee to research ways to improve the county's requirements relating to development and building matters, known as the Ad Hoc Development and Building Research Committee, or DBRC, through March 31, 2018. Whereas Resolution 17-02 formed the DBRC to research ways to improve the county's requirements relating to development and building matters. And whereas in Resolution 17-02, the DBRC's deadline to provide their final report to the county council is stated to be September 30, 2017. And whereas the county council desires to extend the deadline through March 31, 2018 in order to allow the DBRC to complete its research and recommendations. Now therefore be it resolved by the county council of St. Charles County, Missouri as follows. Section 1, the DBRC's deadline is hereby extended from September 30, 2017 to March 31, 2018. All other provisions of Resolution 17-02 remain in full force and effect.
Any questions or comments on this? Mr. Hammond?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, and other council members, we've been working on this for several months, and there's a lot of things, a lot of changes that are coming down the pike from administration and community development that are going to take a lot longer than we anticipated as far as we having the opportunity to review some of those changes before they come to the council that, so that we could make a reasonable recommendation on. We do have some issues that we have brought to fruitation, and we'll be bringing those before the council, some recommendations and on some changes to the UDO. So at this point, I'd ask you to grant us additional time to continue our task.
Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, we'll call the roll.
Resolution 17-09, a resolution extending the deadline of the St. Charles County Council, the county council ad hoc committee to research ways to improve the county's requirements relating to development and building matters, known as the Ad Hoc Development and Building Research Committee, or DBRC, through March 31, 2018. Councilmember Cronin?
Yes.
Councilmember Brazel?
Yes.
Councilmember Hammond?
Yes.
Councilmember Elam?
Yes.
Councilmember Hollander?
Yes.
Councilmember Klinghammer?
Yes.
Councilmember White?
Yes. Resolution 1709 passes. On to Resolution 1710.
Resolution number 1710, sponsored by councils as a whole, a resolution recognizing September 17 through 23 as Constitution Week in St. Charles County, Missouri. Whereas the St. Charles chapter of the Daughters of the American Revolution has been in existence since 1909, and whereas this chapter has a Constitution Week committee with goals to preserve the past, enhance the present, and invest in the future. And whereas the Daughters of the American Revolution wish to educate all citizens, especially the youth and newly naturalized citizens, about our founding documents and encourage all in the community to protect and defend the Constitution. And whereas the Daughters of the American Revolution started a tradition of celebrating Constitution Week many years ago, and whereas in 1955, the Daughters of the American Revolution conveyed a petition to Congress to dedicate September 17 through the 23 as Constitution Week. And whereas the United States Congress adopted such a resolution as President Dwight D. Eisenhower signed Public Law 915 on August 2, 1956, to establish such an observation. And whereas during this time, we remember that the Constitution is a living document that guarantees the freedoms Americans enjoy. Now therefore be it resolved by the county council of St. Charles County, Missouri as follows. Section 1, the St. Charles County Council hereby proclaims the week of September 17 through 23, 2017, as Constitution Week in St. Charles County, Missouri. Section 2, the St. Charles County Council hereby further asks citizens to reaffirm the ideals the framers of the Constitution had in 1787 by vigilantly protecting the freedoms guaranteed to us through this guardian of our liberties.
Would one of the ladies like to come up from Daughters of the American Revolution and speak? Sorry to make you do this.
That's okay. I have something for you, too.
Thank you.
On behalf of the St. Charles chapter, Daughters of the American Revolution, thank you for this proclamation, and we would like to thank the St. Charles County Council for your continued support and recognition of the value of the Constitution.
Thank you very much. I will, I'm sorry, go ahead.
And I would like to present a certificate of award to the St. Charles County government for the proper use, correct display, and patriotic presentation of the flag of the United States of America.
Thank you very much. I will swap you. I'll meet you downstairs. Is Mary here? Do you want to do some quick photos?
Yes.
This is for you. This is for us.
Yes.
Thank you. Quick photo. Excellent. Thank you very much. We appreciate it. So with that done, and I just gave you something that we haven't voted on yet, let's see if we can vote on that.
Resolution 1710, a resolution recognizing September 17 through 23 as Constitution Week in St. Charles County, Missouri. Councilmember Brazel?
Yes.
Councilmember Hammond?
Yes.
Councilmember Elam?
Yes.
Councilmember Hollander?
Yes.
Councilmember Klinghammer?
Yes.
Councilmember White?
Yes.
Councilmember Cronin?
Yes.
Councilmember Brazel?
Yes.
Councilmember Hammond?
Yes.
Councilmember Klinghammer?
Yes.
Councilmember White?
Yes.
Councilmember Cronin?
Yes.
Councilmember Brazel?
Yes.
Councilmember Hammond?
Yes.
Councilmember Klinghammer?
Yes.
Councilmember White?
Yes.
Councilmember Cronin?
Yes.
Thank you, guys, very much. That passes, 1710. I know there's a gentleman who's going to be speaking at the St. Charles County Businessman's Prayer Breakfast this year, in just a couple of weeks, as a matter of fact, who was talking a lot about the Constitution. And I saw a YouTube video with him talking about the fact that he had a college government class that he was speaking to, and he had a picture that we've all seen of the signing of the Declaration or of the Constitution. And he asked them, how many people in this picture can you identify? They could picture, they could identify two, and that was it. So we appreciate the work that you folks are doing. Thank you very much. It's kind of nice to have someone who still thinks the Constitution is important, and we spend time to do that. So thank you very much for your time. Move on to Resolution 1711.
Resolution number 1711, sponsored by councils as a whole, a resolution adopting the 2018 capital program and strategic plan. Whereas the St. Charles County Charter, Article 6, Section 6.301, requires the county council to adopt the capital program and strategic plan, the plan, no later than two months prior to the final date of the submission of the budget. And whereas the St. Charles County Charter, Article 6, Section 6.201, requires that on or before the fifth day of November, or the first working day after the fifth of each fiscal year, the county executives shall submit to the county council a budget for the ensuing fiscal year and an accompanying message. And whereas the county executive has presented the plan to the county council, a public hearing has been held on it, and it has been made available for inspection by the public. Now therefore be it resolved by the county council of St. Charles County, Missouri as follows. Section 1, the plan attached hereto as Exhibit A, known as the Capital Improvement Program Years 2018 to 2022, is hereby approved. Section 2, compliance with all the terms of the Capital Improvement Program Years 2018 to 2022, shall be the responsibility of the county executive.
Any questions or comments on the resolution before us? Yes, Mr. Cronin?
I want to compliment county staff. I spent some time looking through this book, and I think you did an excellent job. I know it was a lot of hard work, okay? And I think it was very clear and explanatory what you guys want to do, and I know in tough budget times, you did a great job trying to make sure all the departments are in good shape. But I would like to take this time to request that the chair consider having a work session prior, way prior to us setting the tax rates for next year, because it's evident on page six of this, if you look at the funding sources, that we are facing a gradual slide in the capital improvement funds available to us, which means we're going to have to supplement that sum with general revenue funds, which means we can't keep doing that probably and keep the level amenities that this county has with a zero property tax. So I just, I think we need to talk about it well before. Last year, we kind of did it real quick, right before it came through. So if you would kindly consider, let's have a meeting well before that comes, the deadline comes for us to set that rate, and we need to make some hard decisions about where we're headed as a county.
Very well. Any other quick, Mr. Brazel?
Yeah, Joanne, on some of these items, I know we have to do this by charter, but like, for instance, on some of the building envelope issues, like tuck pointing, windows, roofing, and stuff like that, I notice that we'll take a building, one building, and spread it out for four years, doing one wall at a time, or something on the bigger buildings and things like that, where that's going to cost more because of staging and setup and all that. And I understand we did that for budgetary reasons, but how, when, once you set this, it's, you could, it's fluid. You can move it a little bit, right? I mean, just to make-
You'll see in the budget, we'll reflect 99% of this, but if a project can't go in one year, and we can move up, you know, something for the next year in that department, we'll talk with that department director and do that.
I mean, I know we've been shy on staff, but I think that the, on the building envelope portion, tuck pointing, some of our building restorations and things, I know we've been, you know, trying to catch up and everything, but I feel we're not really doing enough, but maybe it's for budget reasons and just lack of staff to get to collect the data and so forth. But I know that, I talked to Mr. Graffhewson, I know that there's goals to move things forward in a more positive manner.
There are, and that's one of our priorities as we move into a new director of getting a far sharper plan in place about what we need to do and where all the building envelopes and grounds are.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Seeing none?
Resolution 1711, a resolution adopting the 2018 capital program and strategic plan. Councilmember Hammond?
Yes.
Councilmember Elam?
Yes.
Councilmember Hollander?
Yes.
Councilmember Klinghammer?
Yes.
Councilmember White?
Yes.
Councilmember Cronin?
Yes.
Councilmember Brazel?
Yes.
Resolution 1711 passes. We'll move on to bills for final passage, starting with 4503.
Bill number 4503, an ordinance reversing the Board of Zoning Adjustments Decision on Variance Application, VAR 17-07.
Any questions or comments on 4503?
Mr. Chairman, I visited this residence and talked to the homeowner, and it doesn't appear to me that this will be determined or wouldn't detract from the neighborhood. The neighborhood association is fine with it, and I think we should approve it.
Very well. Any other questions or comments to add?
A yes vote is in favor of giving the man the variance, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments? Seeing none?
Bill number 4503, an ordinance reversing the Board of Zoning Adjustments Decision on Variance Application, VAR 17-07. Councilmember Elam?
Yes.
Councilmember Hollander?
Yes.
Councilmember Klinghammer?
Yes.
Councilmember White?
Yes.
Councilmember Cronin?
Yes.
Councilmember Brazel?
Yes.
Councilmember Hammond?
Yes.
Bill 4503 passes on to Bill 4504.
Bill number 4504, an ordinance authorizing execution of Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission's State Block Grant Agreement, Amendment Number 1, Airport Improvement Program Grant, Project 16-111A-2, and accepting said grant in the amount of $517,758 for design runway, electrical lighting system rehabilitation, and new vault at Smart Field Airport.
Any questions or comments on, yes, Mr. Cronin?
I don't want the administration's head to start swelling over there, but I have another thing to compliment you all on. Mr. Wiss has done a fine job in that airport. I've talked to Confederate Air Force, I've talked to tenants like myself down there, and he's really done a great job in a lot of improvements to the airport, which is going to keep that airport vital and growing, and I think it's a real jewel for the county. So, once again tonight, you did a good job.
That's two in a row.
Yeah, I'm starting to look down the agenda to see what, where we're going to pay for this.
You know he's priming you for something, don't you? Any other questions or comments about this bill? Seeing none?
Bill number 4504, an ordinance authorizing execution of Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission State Block Grant Agreement, Amendment Number 1, Airport Improvement Program Grant, Project 16-111A-2, and accepting said grant in the amount of $517,758 for design runway, electrical lighting system rehabilitation, and new vault at Smart Field Airport. Councilmember Hollander?
Yes.
Councilmember Klinghammer?
Yes.
Councilmember White?
Yes.
Councilmember Cronin?
Yes.
Councilmember Brazel?
Yes.
Councilmember Hammond?
Yes.
Councilmember Elam?
Yes.
Councilmember Hollander?
Yes.
Councilmember Klinghammer?
Yes. Bill number 4504 passes on to Bill number 4505.
Bill number 4505, an ordinance authorizing the county executive to execute a second amendment to the intergovernmental agreement with the city of O'Fallon for collection and dispersment of the city's nuisance abatement special tax bills.
Any questions or comments on 4505? Seeing none?
Just that you could announce that Exhibit A.
Oh, sorry, just to make a note, the bill 4505 has a revised exhibit. The change is adding the codified section pertaining to the city of O'Fallon.
Yes. An ordinance authorizing the county executive to execute a second amendment to the intergovernmental agreement with the city of O'Fallon for collection and dispersment of the city's nuisance abatement special tax bills. Councilmember Klinghammer?
Yes.
Councilmember White?
Yes.
Councilmember Cronin?
Yes.
Councilmember Brazel?
Yes.
Councilmember Hammond?
Yes.
Councilmember Elam?
Yes.
Councilmember Hollander?
Yes.
Bill number 4505 passes on to Bill number 4506.
Bill number 4506, an ordinance authorizing the county executive to execute an intergovernmental grant agreement, 17-0191-PHI-17, between St. Charles County and Missouri Foundation for Health for receipt of funds in the, in an amount up to $20,000, and amending the 2017 budget adopted by ordinance 16-104 by appropriating additional funds in the general fund budget, Department of Public Health.
Any questions or comments on Bill 4506? Seeing none?
An ordinance authorizing the county executive to execute an intergovernmental grant agreement, 17-0191-PHI-17, between St. Charles County and Missouri Foundation for Health for receipt of funds in an amount up to $20,000, and amending the 2017 budget adopted by ordinance 16-104 by appropriating additional funds in the general fund budget, Department of Public Health. Councilmember White? dollars and amending the two thousand seventeen budget adopted by ordinance sixteen dash one zero four by appropriating additional funds in the general fund budget, Department of Public Health. Councilmember White?
Yes.
Councilmember Cronin?
Yes.
Councilmember Brazel?
Yes.
Councilmember Hammond?
Yes.
Councilmember Ehlum?
Yes.
Councilmember Hollander?
Yes.
Councilmember Klinghammer?
Yes.
Councilmember White?
Yes.
Bill number forty five oh six passes on to bill number forty five oh seven.
Bill number forty five oh seven, an ordinance amending sections four zero five point zero six zero and four zero five point zero eight zero point C of the ordinances of St. Charles County, Missouri, O S U C M O, to remove weddings and wedding receptions from the definition of the rural recreational activities and authorize certain buildings and open spaces for wedding and wedding receptions as conditional uses in the A Agricultural Zoning District, subject to certain limitations.
Mr. Brazel?
Yes, as per our work session, I'd offer to table this bill so I can get with Mike and come up with a reasonable distance that we talked about.
We have a motion to table. Do we have a second?
Second.
There's a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Bill number forty five oh seven is tabled. That moves us on to bills for introduction. Bill forty five oh nine.
Bill number forty five oh nine, requested by Bob Schnur, sponsored by Mike Ehlum, an ordinance amending the two thousand seventeen budget adopted as ordinance sixteen dash one zero four by making a supplemental appropriation to the capital projects funds budget in the amount of sixteen million, one hundred thousand dollars for the purpose of providing funds for capital improvements, including a new tornado-resistant emergency operations center, a centralized facility for the Department of Emergency Management and Emergency Communications, an expansion of the existing evidence storage facility of the St. Charles County Police Department.
Any questions or comments about forty five oh nine? Seeing none, we'll move on to forty five ten.
Bill number forty five ten, requested by Belinda Little, sponsored by councils a whole, an ordinance amending the drug and alcohol-free workplace policy, section one one five point eight hundred point C of the ordinances of St. Charles County, Missouri, O S U C M O, concerning the alcohol concentration levels applicable to the prohibition against the operation of a commercial motor vehicle of or for St. Charles County by any employee whose position required of the possession of a valid commercial driver's license for having consumed alcohol.
Any questions or comments about forty five ten?
I got a question.
Yes, sir.
Is this some, do we not have an alcohol policy in place? Joanne, or someone?
Sure, we do. This is a change. It was worded wrongly, apparently. You'll see down on page two, it was two hundredths of one percent, and it was worded as two tenths of one percent. So they needed to amend the wording to correct it.
Oh, okay.
But it's, there's no other change to our workplace alcohol policy.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, that wraps up bills for introduction. Any action to be taken on table bill forty five oh eight?
Just to add, one more thing that we're working on, I anticipate the, we come to the council with recommendation.
So that bill remains on the table. Any announcements or miscellaneous, starting with Mr. Cronin?
This Sunday is the traditional St. Paul Catholic Church picnic. It's been going on for a hundred and fifty years. It's right down seventy-nine. There'll be signs you can follow, or you can file it through Main Street of O'Fallon. There are lots of stuff for kids to do, there's continuous music all day, kids' rides, lots of fun stuff. Plus, there's two tons of beef that's cooked old-fashioned way on wood-fired kettles, there's two tons of chicken, and there's enough beer to float a small warship. So if you, if you've never been-
Why we had to do that change on the beer legislation?
Yes. So if you never have been to a St. Paul picnic, it's an event you might like. It is also, running it is also the hardest job I've ever done in my life, okay? So have a good, if you can come out, it's a good time for all.
Mr. Hammond?
I would like to take a moment and recognize a past council member that's in our audience tonight, and that's Cheryl Hibler. She probably doesn't, it's a pleasure to have you here.
Welcome back. Any other questions or announcements? None? I would like to thank Bob Schnur for, and for the county executive, for letting me join them, for trying to pack a million meals in a day at the Family Arena. That was a great event. That was a lot of fun. I can't believe how fast that went. But if you've never been a part of a foodpacking event, man, that was huge. Forty-nine tables going at once, was that how?
Forty-eight.
Forty-eight tables going at once, and they had that thing done, and county executive was putting those pallets together, man, left and right, we were getting it done. And Joanne made sure everybody was one, two, three, and getting it all done. So I think Mike Croweberg has a carpal tunnel now, after adding it on his oatmeal, but it was a very good time, that was a great event, and I appreciate you and Sam and all the guys who worked to get that done. And I think the idea of that is to make sure that we, that food was going to stay here for the most part in St. Charles County. And I know they packed well over four hundred thousand meals just in that day, so.
We did six sixty on Sunday.
Six sixty on Sunday, beautiful.
If they want to send some of it down to Houston, we'll understand.
That's-
I think they stayed and packed more for Houston, didn't they? That's what it said.
We extended ours, and there's a shipment that is going to go to Houston, apparently, to help out down there.
That was a great event. You had people from all over who came and spent their Saturdays and Sundays to pack food for people who they'll never meet. So that was a really good thing. Mr. Brazel?
I would like to thank Joanne, Captain Hunt, the administration. They did a great job with the crowd control for the Eclipse party. We had people from Minnesota, Texas, all over the place. It was phenomenal, the parks were great, everybody had a great time. The traffic wasn't as bad on the way in, but it was, it was manageable on the way out, but the police department did a really phenomenal job.
Did you catch the chief of police personally directing traffic on Highway ninety-four?
I, I saw him out there, yeah, yeah, yeah.
He did a very nice job. He hasn't lost the old-
Yeah, he was out there, and he was dancing too, yeah.
Very impressive.
Anything else?
I need to make a motion.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to go into closed session per state statute, R S M O six ten dot zero two one two.
Second.
We have a motion made in a second. Roll call.
Councilmember Cronin?
Yes.
Councilmember Brazel?
Yes.
Councilmember Hammond?
Yes.
Councilmember Ehlum?
Yes.
Councilmember Hollander?
Yes.
Councilmember Klinghammer?
Yes.
Councilmember White?
We will adjourn into closed session, we'll be back after that. You folks are welcome to hang out, or you can leave. Thank you very much for your time today.
Do you have something you're going to do?
All of your favorite shows with no annual contract.
Wow, no annual contract, no commitment at all? Remind you of anyone done?
Maybe your wife?
Bingo.
Can we wrap this up, Kevin?
Ah, sorry Doug. That's prepaid your way from AT&T.
Great, thank you.
Sure beats whatever Sergio's offering.
Okay, that's it, I'm cutting it legal.
Limited time offer, requires payment at activation, taxes extra. Account must remain active on $45 or $65 plan. It cannot lapse to get bill credit for third and 12 months. Fees covered under the restrictions apply. Details at att.com/pay.
The true value of a Cutis pre-arranged funeral is not just the knowledge that rising costs are no longer a concern. The real value of a Cutis pre-arrangement comes in that time of need. A Cutis pre-arranged funeral alleviates any concern when our family is in grief and confusion, wondering if everything has been taken care of as we would have wanted. I'm Tom Cutis IV, and with a Cutis pre-arrangement, all uncertainty is set aside. Your family will never be endowed as to, did we do the right thing? Cutis Funeral Homes, affordability with dignity since 1910.
When you donate to the St. Louis area food bank, you're helping feed more than 392,000 of your neighbors in need each year. Just $1 can provide four meals for someone in your community. Donate securely at stlfoodbank.org today. That's stlfoodbank.org.
Alcohol and drug addiction is an epidemic that destroys lives and families. Conquering the addiction takes a team of counselors, families, and loved ones. Harris House has comprehensive treatment options at both our South St. Louis and Town and Country facilities. Harris House treatment is covered by most insurance, is affordable, and it works. Let us help. Call us at 314-631-4299, or find us on the web at harrishouse.org.
Goodfellas Moving Company is here for all your relocating needs. Unlike our competitors, we offer the same affordable hourly rate six days a week. Call 314-405-8228, or visit online at gfmovingcompany.com. Goodfellas moving, move with the best, and forget about it.
For all you baby boomers out there born between 1945 and 1965, listen up. There's some important news that may surprise you. Did you know that one in 30 baby boomers has hepatitis C? That's right, one in 30 boomers. And most don't even know it. It's important because Hep C is a serious virus that can hide in the body for years, even decades, with no symptoms. If left untreated, Hep C can lead to liver damage, and it's the leading cause of liver cancer. Here's something else you should know. The CDC recommends all baby boomers get tested for Hep C. A simple, one-time test is all it takes. And if you have Hep C, it can be cured. So ask your healthcare provider about getting tested for Hep C today. It's the only way to know for sure. To learn more, visit hepcfacts.com, or call 844-9HEPCFACTS. Brought to you by Gilead Sciences.
Qualified buyers drive payment-free for six months. Shop now at federico-gia.com.
From the Midwest RV Center Studios, this is 103.3 KLOU.
St. Louis's greatest hits are back on, 103.3 KLOU.
103.3 KLOU, St. Louis.
Put the phone down and turn the music up.
103.3 KLOU, do yourself a favor and go try to win that $100,000 online right now. Go to klou.com, enter the correct locker combination, and the hundred grand can be yours.
From Wildwood to Gottfried, St. Louis's greatest hits are on 103.3 KLOU.
Billy and Julie in the morning.
On the next show, I have some new words you need to know about to stay hip and happen.
Slang words, and some of these are just ridiculous. Plus, a list of stuff that always goes on sale in September.
Billy and Julie in the morning.
On 103.3 KLOU.
Ten years, I guess I should be wishing a happy birthday to Renters Warehouse. They've been around for ten years now. By the way, it's Billy Greenwood. I cannot believe that 10 years ago, this sprouting young regional property management company, now 10 years later, has become what they have become. Placing and warranting tenants for 10 years. Professional, timely rent collection and maintenance coordination. And by the way, as a gift to you, 10% discount on Renters Warehouse Property Management on up to 10 homes. They're gonna take that off of their already low flat monthly fee. And how about this? You can save even more money when you pay your full property management contract. Do that upfront. Buy more rental properties, invest now with America's number one rent estate company. Doesn't get any better than Renters Warehouse. The last decade has proven that. Call Renters Warehouse today, do that at 314-720-5001, to get the details on your gift of 10% off property management for the entire summer. Or you can visit renterswarehouse.com, 314-720-5001, for Renters Warehouse.
There's a big red barn where you save green. Norm's Bargain Barn, on discount windows, doors, and things. Norm's Bargain Barn, Norm's, 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 Norm's. Norm's Bargain Barn, Norm's, 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 Norm's. Norm's Bargain Barn.
When you need to save on discount windows, doors, and cabinetry, come to the Big Red Barn where you always save some green. Norm's Bargain Barn. Norm's features all shapes and sizes of windows, interior doors, and cabinetry at prices for everyone's budget. Choose from factory overruns and slightly blemish products. But those blemishes mean up to 50% off. Norm's Bargain Barn, open Monday through Thursday till 7:00. Fridays till 4:45, and Saturdays till 2:00. And now, visit Norm's new location in Fenton at Graboy Bluffs. When you need a bargain, come to Norm's Bargain Barn.
There's a big red barn where you save green. Norm's Bargain Barn, on discount windows, doors, and things. Norm's Bargain Barn.
In shallow Illinois and now opening in Fenton. Check normsbargainbarn.com.
With the free iHeartRadio app, you can type in the name of your favorite artist and get a station full of their biggest hits and similar artists just for you. Songs handpicked by real people, fellow music fans. As you thumb songs up or down, we personalize the station to fit you better. It's that easy. Type in the name of an artist and let us get to work. All your favorite music, all your favorite stations, all free. So go download our free iHeartRadio app today.
You think everyone's watching that show with the girl and the dragons and the game and the throne? But guess what? Just like the show, that's fantasy. More people in America listen to the radio than watch that throne show. It's true, 93% of Americans each week. That's more than TV, Facebook, and Google. Put that in your dragon and smoke it. Radio reaches more adults, teens, even millennials. So if you're a marketer, get the most for your marketing dollar. Talk to the folks who dethrone TV. Go to iHeartMedia.com for the one place you can reach everybody, AM/FM radio.
Get the biggest off-road savings of the year now during the Polaris factory authorized clearance. Rebates go up to $4,000, and financing is as low as 2.99% APR on the industry's best-selling brands, Ranger, Razor, and legendary Sportsman. Now is the time to buy. See your Polaris dealer today. Offer valid in US 726 through 93017 on new vehicles. Rebates and financing vary by model year. Subject to credit approval, see dealer for details. Always wear a helmet, never drink and ride.
There's something special about coming from a small town. An honesty, an integrity, a simple, down-to-earth goodness not found anywhere else. The kind we find in towns with names like Conklin, Dexter, and Sparta. Towns that grow Michigan apples on hundreds of family-run farms throughout the state. Farms that benefit from sun-drenched days, cool nights, and soil made hardy by the Great Lakes. To grow apples with names like Honeycrisp, Johnnagold, Gala, and Fuji. With so many varieties to choose from, we're sure to find one that's perfect for a family recipe. To put in our kids' lunches, or to grab as we run out the door. And because they're grown right in our backyard, we know they're just down the road fresh. So next time we go shopping, let's look for a bag of Michigan apples, where small-town goodness will be found inside. As well a taste that's pure Michigan. Learn more at michigan.org.
It's instant savings time at Sam's Club. Save over $5,000 on hundreds of items, all preloaded to your membership card. Get set for football season with $200 off an LG 75-inch 4K UHD Smart TV. Plus, score savings on DiGiorno pizzas, Tostitos hint of lime scoops, and so much more. Now you can beat the lines. Download our Scan and Go app and check out instantly. Join today at sam'sclub.com or at your local club and get instant savings now through September 17th.
Scattered showers and thunderstorms will diminish later this evening. A chance for patchy fog overnight, and then a variably cloudy to partly cloudy sky on Tuesday. Will drop into the 60s tonight, highs on Tuesday in the lower 80s. I'm five on your side meteorologist Scott Connell.
This report is brought to you by Positive Coaching Alliance. If you're involved in youth or high school sports...
If you're involved in youth or high school sports, you need to know about Positive Coaching Alliance. PCA, a national nonprofit organization. Develops better athletes and better people. PCA workshops help coaches, parents, and student athletes pursue winning and life lessons through sports. Visit positivecoach.org.
St. Louis's greatest hits, 103.3 KLOU.
Motion's made in second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? We are back in session.
Motion to adjourn the meeting.
Second?
Motion to adjourn in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? We are adjourned.
Yay!